Going. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to a work session of the Douglas County Commission here on Wednesday, November eighteenth. Today, our work session is a discussion of home-based services for frail and elderly in Douglas County through the Douglas County Visiting Nurses Association and Trinity In-Home Care. The work sessions that are undertaken by the Douglas County Commission are for information purposes only. We don't take general public comment at these work sessions, nor do we vote on anything. If you do have general public comment, we invite you to our 5:30 business meeting later today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jill, I believe, and let her introduce our guests and start the discussion.
Thanks, Commissioner Kelly. Well, thanks for making time for this conversation today. I think both the organizations that we're going to have a discussion with and get an update from our familiar organizations, their valued organizations that the county funds each year through our community partner agreement budget. I think the purpose of today's, today's conversation is to give you a sense of where these organizations are at in terms of who they're serving, how they're serving them, what kind of challenges they're experiencing, not just in a COVID environment, but also navigating the different financial sources that they're able to tap into or not tap into, and really understanding who are the folks that they're serving that in a lot of ways may not be served unless, without the, the funding that Douglas County provides. And we kind of just want to see where the, where the conversation goes after that. What you're going to hear is that there are some, there are some challenges with doing the work that these agencies do. But I think the reason why the county has served these, provided funding for these organizations through our community partners budget for so long is because the county realizes that these are safety net services and they're important to the community. So we're going to start with VNA. Both organizations have a slide deck. Cynthia Lewis with Douglas County Visiting Nurses is going to start things out. And I'm going to let her introduce herself and start screen sharing with the presentation she's put together.
Yes, I think everyone knows me, but just in case, I'm Cynthia Lewis. I'm the CEO of Douglas County Visiting Nurses. And thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I'm working from dual screen, so if I'm looking away from you, it's because I'm looking at my other screen. Does everybody see that?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Let's try that again. There we go. Are we there now?
We are there.
Okay. So we actually refreshed our mission statement earlier this year, and I'm not sure if any of you have had an opportunity to see it. We updated it to improving quality of life through compassionate patient care wherever you call home. We felt like that spoke better to how we felt about our community and what we do better than our previous mission statement. So we've been celebrating that work for almost 52 years. We have our 52nd anniversary in February of 2021. So the agency was founded with our home health program, which is a Medicare-certified program. It means that CMS certifies that program to provide skilled care. So it consists of an interdisciplinary team and provides individualized care. So every patient that we admit has a, a personal plan of care that includes either skilled nursing and skilled nursing services can be such things as wound care, infusion therapy, pain management, diabetic respiratory chronic disease care, medication management. It can be a variety of things. Then we also have physical therapy in that program, which are physical therapists, and we also have physical therapy assistants who support our physical therapists. Physical therapy is one-on-one personalized exercise planner treatment to promote strength, balance, flexibility, and manage pain. Then that program also includes occupational therapists who help patients to perform tasks of daily living. Speech therapy, which evaluates and treats voice speech or swallowing disorders. And oftentimes, our speech therapist is engaged with patients who have cognitive deficits to do some work with them in that arena. We contract for respiratory therapy with Lawrence Memorial. One of their respiratory therapists provides services to some of our home health patients. And as you can imagine, we've engaged him quite a bit more in recent months to be part of our plan of care with our patients. We also have a social worker in that program that helps provide support with seeking community resources, assisting with financial, financial matters and such things as that. And then that program also has home health aides who are certified to provide personal care assistance in monitoring patients' conditions. One of the things I want to mention regarding home health and hospice is that those aides actually have another certification level above and beyond a certified nursing assistant. They have to be certified home health aides to be able to provide aid services in home health or hospice. That is different than our private pay help-at-home program. So every patient who is admitted to our Medicare-certified home health program has a plan of care that's developed, and it can include any collection of any of those disciplines. It has to, in order to qualify for skilled services, it has to, a case has to be opened either by a nurse or a physical therapist. Are there any questions?
Cynthia, one thing that might be helpful, and I know that it, it'll come up when we talk about Trinity, is what's the, the workforce, what could you briefly talk about the workforce challenges of those folks that are on that previous slide?
In terms of staffing availability?
Mm-hmm.
Well, right now, actually, for the first time in my history and perhaps in the history of VNA, we have just engaged a staffing agency to provide a registered nurse because we were down to one and a half full-time RNs in our home health program because people had left for a variety of reasons, actually, other than COVID. They were being supported and continue to be supported by LPNs. We have been fortunate to recruit a number of highly skilled and qualified licensed practical nurses, and they can help support RNs. So the registered nurses can manage the case, but the LPNs can do many routine visits. We currently, we, we have had in the past, we've had some challenges recruiting therapists, physical therapists in particular. We actually are in a good space right now relative to physical therapy. Many of our home health counterparts have, they have to use contract therapy. They don't employ any of their own therapists. We've had to do that intermittently in the past, but currently we have our own employees and, and we have tried to the best of our ability to always employ our own therapist because there is a different, we feel like there's a different level of commitment and quality of care when they're actually employed by an agency rather than when they, when they are in and out as a, as a contract employee. And then in term, we don't have any shortage in the occupational therapy arena. We have had consistent staffing with OT for quite a period of time. Both of our full-time OTs have been with us a number of years. And, and we have an adequate number of aides who are able to work across programs.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
Oh, you're welcome. One of the things I wanted to mention, just in terms of capacity, in 2019, we served 985 patients in our home health program, provided almost 20,000 visits. And in 2020, we're actually, based on near-to-date data, I project that we'll serve somewhere around 1,100 patients in our, in our home health program. Just to give you some perspective about how many people we're serving. So in that program, it's not going back. Let me go back here. So home health has very, Medicare-certified home health has very specific criteria. For those of you who have heard this from me before, Medicare requires that a patient be homebound, and you see the definition there on your screen of what that means. And most payers follow that definition. Medicaid doesn't actually require people to be homebound to receive home health services. So that's different from Medicare. But payers like Blue Cross and Blue Shield, most of them require that a patient be homebound in order to receive these services. The other thing about Medicare-certified home health is that the visits are intermittent and time-limited, so it's short-term intermittent care. It's not considered to be a long-term solution for an individual. So in terms of revenue sources, Medicare is our primary source of revenue for our home health program. About 75% of our program census are Medicare patients. One of the things that we've seen, and you'll see this in the next slide, Medicare started cutting reimbursement to home health agencies around five years ago, and then in 2020 implemented a new payment model, which has made a distinct difference in the level of reimbursement that we're receiving for our services. Medicare Advantage is a subset of that 75% Medicare census for us. We do not have a lot of Medicare Advantage in this area. It's much more prevalent on the coasts, but we are seeing that increase. And so they are, they are supposed to follow Medicare coverage rules, but they are private insurance companies who have contracts with Medicare to provide coverage to Medicare-eligible individuals. And so what we see is that all of those individual insurance companies have different rules, different regulations, they have some different expectations. We have a couple of those Medicare Advantage payers who nearly every patient that we admit that they're covering, they ask for additional documentation to support our care. So that is an additional administrative burden for us. About 13% of our patients are private insurance, so they haven't reached Medicare age yet. And then about 12% are Medicaid. And Medicaid, particularly under the managed care model, reimburses, and I, and I know Trinity can attest to this too, reimburses us about 15% to 17% of the cost of our skilled care. And that is something that went every year when I have the opportunity to speak to the state legislators, I reinforce with them. On the other hand, I always also share with them that some reimbursement is better than no reimbursement. And so, you know, encourage them to try to move to Medicaid expansion. And then in addition to that, we also have the funding that you provide. And we have one other specific grant that will fund charity care. Most grants will not, they want to pay for projects and not for services. So our home health program accounts for about 76% of the charity care that we provide. And this has been pretty consistent over time. We have, last year in 2019, our home health program consumed almost all of the funding that Douglas County provided to us in 2019. And we are actually on target for that to be true in 2020 as well. So home health uses about 76% of our, of the overall charity care that we provide. So to give you a picture, and home health is the one program that I gave you a visual like this because, number one, this is the program that we were founded on. And it is indeed striking what has occurred with our operational trend over the last five years and then what we project for 2021. For the first time in my tenure at VNA, our home health program is projected to be, to have a loss, negative revenues over expenses. And there's a number of variables that play into that, that I'll talk about. And then we project that loss to continue in 2021. We have, so in addition to the decrease in Medicare revenue, one of the things that we saw, particularly in the early days of the public health emergency, was that our home health referrals decreased significantly. When Lawrence Memorial closed services to elective procedures and operations, our home health census in particular tends to flow as LMH's census flows. They're not our only referral source, but they're our primary referral source. So in March of this year, we saw our home health referrals decrease by 21%. And then in April, they decreased by about 26%. And those are from 2020 to, as compared to 2019. They did rebound after that. May was a push. And then actually, through the summer, we saw an increase in our overall census. And now October is closer to a push than over the last, over the four months prior to that. But in addition to losing those referrals, as you can imagine, we saw an increase in expenses. So over those, over that period of time, we've seen an increase in operational expenses. And, and this year in particular, we've had additional expenses related to, to COVID. We did benefit from the Unified Command relative to some PPE. We got some face shields, we got some N95s, but it wasn't enough to meet all of our need. And so we've had a fair amount of expense related to PPE and some of the things that we needed for personal protective equipment and supplies related to COVID care just weren't available through Unified Command. But we are grateful for what we received there. And then, and then, as I said, we've also had, we also have the new payment model. That model was projected for us to decrease our revenue from 2019 to 2020 about 12%. And, but with everything going on this year, it's a little hard to tease out how much of it is the decrease in referrals, how much of it is COVID expense, how much of it is the new payment model. We really need a little more history to, to tease that out. Does anybody have any questions so far?
And I just wanted to clarify, the, the county funding is for the Help-at-Home program, right?
No, the county, and that's one of, no, that's one of the things, that's one of the reasons that I mentioned. Let me see if I can go back. Oh, it's in this slide. So this Douglas County funding and grants, 76% of those two combined, which the majority of it is Douglas County funding, 76% of that goes to our Medicare-certified home health program for patients who are uninsured and underinsured.
Okay, so it's kind of even, it's distributed, it's kind of, it, it offsets almost all your operations in a way?
Yes, we use, we use some of the Douglas County funding in all of our programs.
Okay, and, and I just want to...
And I touched on that in future slides, Jill.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Then we have hospice. Our hospice program has been around since 1981. Most of you are probably familiar with hospice, hospice, but it to patients have an interdisciplinary and individualized plan of care. One of the differences with hospice is not only the way that we are reimbursed for it, Medicare pays a per diem rate that has to cover all of the medical supplies and equipment and medications related to a patient's end-of-life diagnosis. And then a level of care that we are required by regulation to provide is inpatient hospice care. This community can't support, can't support the financial viability of a hospice house like Midland has in Topeka, that research was done several years ago. So we have a contract with Lawrence Memorial to provide inpatient hospice care at LMH. It has to be ordered by the patient's primary care physician and be physician-directed. We have a hospice medical director, who's Rich Suzinski. And then skilled nursing and social work are the core elements of hospice care. So a nurse and RN case manages the patient's care, develops the plan of care in partnership with the patient and their family. And then social work provides emotional support, counseling, financial, end-of-life financial matters, sometimes funeral planning, identifying a funeral home, those kinds of things. That program also has a, has hospice aides. And then another element of that program that is different from our home health program is spiritual and bereavement care. We have a spiritual care coordinator who also provides bereavement care after the death of a patient to the, to the family and/or that, that patient's network. And we also, as part of our not-for-profit mission to serve our community, we provide community-wide bereavement and grief support groups, whether someone's been our patient or not. We open those up to community, to the community. Now, unfortunately, in the time of COVID, those groups have been put on hold. We did have one virtual grief support group recently. It was not well-attended. I think everyone's over Zoom these days. But we are, we are looking at other opportunities to try to, to support people, and we always are available on a one-on-one basis. In 2019, in our hospice program, we served 299 patients and their families and did a little over 9,600 visits. So the revenue sources for hospice, again, Medicare's primary, about 94% of the program census is Medicare. And one of the things I want to mention is that although private insurance does pay for hospice, Medicare Advantage, when, if a patient is on Medicare Advantage, at this time, they convert to what we call traditional Medicare. However, CMS, as a means, we believe, to try to save money, is launching a pilot in 2021 to, for Medicare Advantage hospice benefits. So Kansas is not in that model, fortunately, but we'll be anxious to see how that goes. And of course, with a new administration coming in, who knows how many of those, those pilots and innovations will continue to, to move forward. About 3% of our hospice census is private insurance, and then about 3% is Medicaid. Interestingly, Medicaid, at this point in time, reimburses hospice care at the same rate as Medicare does. So it is, it does not have the same loss effect as Medicaid does in home health. So about 16% of the charity care that we provide comes, goes to hospice care. So Douglas County funding and, and that grant, about 16% of that money goes to provide hospice care. And I will say, I did not do a similar graph for hospice and, and Help-at-Home as I did with the operational trend because both of these programs are relatively flat. Help-at-Home is, is a continuous loss leader for us because the margin is so small. It is, it is more similar to what Trinity provides. And, and our hospice revenue line has been relatively flat. It is the program, so we have inverted from what used to be. Home Health used to be the program that financially supported the agency. And this year and next year, it is, it is hospice. So that is, that is noteworthy. So our Help-at-Home, which is the program that is similar to what Trinity provides, it really is designed to be part of VNA's continuum of care. And it's a program that my predecessor launched. Getting that program licensed was underway when I came to VNA in December of 2008. And so the services are somewhat similar. One of the exceptions, I believe, and I'm sure that Scott will correct me if I'm mistaken when he does his presentation, we do provide medication setup by LPNs. And, but many of the rest of the services, and we have, we do have a number of clients in that program for which we provide that service. But then we also do like housekeeping, meal planning and prep, shopping and errands, transportation, companionship, very similar services to what Trinity provides. The one exception is that we, our waiver patients actually receive periodic visits by a registered nurse in order to check on, check on them. That's part of our, that's part of the medical side of the services that VNA provides. And then, of course, those services are in-home. So our revenue sources, it's mostly private pay, which is about 76% of our overall census, are rates for what we call hands-on services. So those activities like bathing and shaving and grooming and eating assistance, those kinds of things, is $22 an hour. Our companion services, so if we're not, if we're not providing any of those hands-on services, we are simply doing companion services, just sitting with someone or providing respite care, is $20 an hour. We don't have very many folks on that companion care level of service because one of the things that we find, and this is probably true for Trinity as well, is that many people, even when they, if they think they just need someone to sit with them, ultimately, they end up needing some help with personal care. So for us, that is in the hands-on services category. We have a contract with the VA, sometimes much to my dismay because they are slow to pay. But that's about 16% of that, of that program census in Help-at-Home. And they develop the plan of care for the veterans, and then they send it to us, and we simply implement what they order. We do have clients in that program who are on long-term care insurance. That's about 7% of our program census, and that is completely policy-dependent. So it, it just depends on what someone's policy covers, what percentage of their, of their services will be paid for by their long-term care. And then we have Medicaid, which is a very small number. So we have two, we continue to have two waiver patients in that program that we have served for years and years. And they actually, because of their level of need, they actually periodically require skilled services. So while they continue to be in the Help-at-Home program, they also float in and out of our home health, our skilled home health program for nursing care and some other services because they, they have a decline or they have a, they have a wound that surfaces or something like that. So small number of folks, but much higher need. So about 8% of our charity care goes to those, those two folks. That is the only, that's the only area. The, the rest of Help-at-Home is private pay. And in 2019, we served 217 clients, almost 26,000 hours in that program. And finally, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Cynthia.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions before we let Trinity walk through their slides? And then hopefully, we can carve out a few minutes at the end of this for a discussion and some more questions about the similarities. a discussion and some more questions about the similarities.
None from me.
I don't. That was really thorough and really helpful to understand it. Thanks Cynthia.
You're welcome.
Scott or Stephanie, I can kind of be the, the master on the slide deck or one of, you should be able to share screen if you'd like to as well.
I can do that Jill. Thank you. And Stephanie, just let me know when you, when you get to your part, when you want to transition slides. Good evening, everyone. I think it's evening. I think I survived today. It's so good to be with you. And before we get started and before your faces get really small on the screen, I just want to thank you for all your support over the years. Really appreciate it, especially during this time. It's a challenging time for Trinity because of COVID and not having an executive director and a variety of reasons. But first, thank you. And thank you for having this session and getting to know us a little bit better. So I'm going to share my screen.
And hey Scott, just make sure, introduce just your name and what's your role in this space too.
That was part of my PowerPoint.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You are all good. Here we go. Can y'all see that? Okay. All right. Well, everyone, I'm Scott Creekey. I'm the interim executive director for Trinity in Home Care. You will also be hearing from Stephanie Wilson, which is our board president. So what I'm going to do today, oops, give you a flash forward to everything. This is what I was going to do. So Trinity in Home Care, I'm going to give you a general overview of our purpose, our services, how we're structured, and then Stephanie's really going to focus more on budget and more of those kinds of details and additional requests. So Trinity's been around since 1976. We've had a tremendous relationship with the community. We were founded in the basement of a church with the need that children coming out of institutions at the time needed support. So a group of people in this community got together and decided we need to do something about it. So they eventually formed what would become Trinity in Home Care. And still a large percent of what we do is support kids with developmental disabilities. So our purpose, Trinity was founded back in 1976 and we keep this the same from that point forward, is that it's really about independence, keeping people as independent as possible. There's a variety of different reasons. That's helpful, but of course, in terms of health-wise, people do better when they're independent. And they also do better when they're in the community that they've grown up in, that they love. People have better health outcomes from mental health to physical health to spiritual health. If they are independent and in the community that they love and surrounded by the people they care about. Additionally, we've noticed that the community does better. And there's been studies showing that the community benefits from having people in the community. And so that's when we're looking at independence and community, we're looking at both our clients and the community as a whole by keeping people in the community. And we do that all with dignity. As you could imagine, if you've had this circumstance in life where you've lost your ability to do something, like giving yourself a bath, being able to get out of the, your house, not being able to do your own cooking, that's a real sense of pride that you can lose. So we try to do all of our services with a sense of dignity. How we do all that is very similar to Cynthia's and VNA's Help at Home program. So we do non-medical in-home and community support. That looks just like what Cynthia, Cynthia said, except for the medication. And she is correct on that. We do not do medication. But we do remind people to take their medication, which is a challenge oftentimes for individuals. But that also looks like we help people get to other social services in town, which is crucial. We help people do their laundry. We help people with cooking, housekeeping. We help kids with homework. We help kids interact with their peers. We help adults with the disabilities get to their jobs. So there's a variety of different things that our services look like. One thing that is not funded, but is very critical to our clients is the social support we provide. Oftentimes, we are the only agency that comes in on a regular basis and provides support and not even just an agency. Sometimes we're the only people that they see within a month period of time. So there's the high benefit to our clients of having social interactions as well. Community partners. One of the things, as I mentioned, what we do oftentimes is help other partners in the community. That is either making sure that the physical therapy is getting executed. That is helping someone get to an appointment. That's making sure someone can get to their job so that they can have health insurance, so they can access different services. We do all those services only in Douglas County. We feel that's important. We get majority, if not, well, majority, if not all of our funding from Douglas County and the taxpayers of Douglas County. So we think it's important to serve just Douglas County. We try to serve all people that come to us. We understand that that's not always realistic, and especially in today's environment where we have low wages and we can't recruit as many people as we need. But we also understand that we are a social service nonprofit agency. So we take the responsibility of providing care to those who cannot afford it or who cannot get it elsewhere. We emphasize those people and make sure to prioritize them in the care that we deliver. We do this 24 hours, 365 a day, 365 days a year. We do overnight support, day shifts are overnight evenings, all sorts of different time periods. If you can think of a time, we are there. So how does those services get operationalized? That is through our direct support professionals or referred to as DSPs. Those are the people who go out and deliver the services. Their expertise can range from people just right out of high school, looking for experience, all the way up to retired RNs. We have people who are in internship programs. We are at work, we work with Cottonwood to work with some of their clients who have higher functioning, working with them to support other people with disabilities. We work with Burt Nash Seed Program to make sure that those people that have dual diagnosis sometimes can get out and get jobs and feel good about themselves. We work with the Workforce Center with them on their apprentice program. So there's a variety of different partnerships that we use in order to get our direct support professionals. We have three administrative staff. They take care of that coordination of care. So from billing to finding staff, to placing staff, to training staff, orienting staff. Those are our three administrative staff. And then there's an executive director. And that is the person who provides oversight, strategic planning and fundraising. We do all that through the, through different funding sources. Medicaid is our predominant source of revenue. That counts. Stephanie will get into more of that, but just the way you look at it depends between 85 and 95% of our funding comes from Medicaid. We have a sliding scale program, which during the age of COVID took a real hard hit. People who can pay for services did not want people in their home, apparently. But our Medicaid services actually increased during this time period. And we have different other funding sources, including Douglas County, which 100% of your care goes, or your funding goes to offset Medicaid. For those who are visual, you want to visuals, look at what our structure looks like. This is what it looks like. I think the most important thing on here is that we take very, how do I want to phrase this? We, we understand the importance that what we do as a social service nonprofit agency here is we serve Douglas County. We serve the citizens here and we take that seriously. We build it into our org chart and we think about that in all the decisions we make. It's important to understand some context when you're looking at Trinity. And three, I just kind of highlighted three of the major things about the history and the environment that we live in currently. One of the most important things and how we got developed as an organization is the concept of de-institutionalization. This is oftentimes talked about when you're talking about mental health care. Taking people out of institutions and bringing them back in the community. Because as I had mentioned before, all the research shows that people do better when they're in the community that they love. This is also true with people with developmental disabilities and people who are aging in place and trying to get them out of nursing care facilities. So when that trend started in the late 60s and the early 70s, what you saw was just that people are getting better, they're moving out of the community. But what we didn't see is the money that actually followed. They took that money and used it as a cost-saving measure. So oftentimes, and we continue to see this trend over time, is that we take people out of institutions, put them in the community, even the, and at this point, some of the highest people at risk, taking them out of institutions, putting them into the community because it's a cost-saving measure, not because it's necessarily the best decision in their health. So that process continued in the 80s. The HCBS, Home Community Based Services picked up and that's how Trinity started to get funding through Medicaid. Flash forward to 2010, CAN Care, that was the Brown Brack administration of privatizing Medicaid in our state. We work with MCOs, this concept of CAN Care, Medicare, or the MCOs and privatizing Medicaid really add another layer of complexities to delivering care for Trinity. At that point, what really the state of Kansas really wanted to do was emphasize what is called self-directed care. Self-directed care is this idea, once again, has been shown clinically that people who self-direct care do better because they have more control over their own care. Really tried to emphasize that through the HCBS program. What that did was make agency-directed care, this stuff that we do. So the difference is self-directed, they're hiring their own staff, they're training their own staff, they're orienting their own staff. Agency-directed care, which Trinity does, is take all that away from the client and freeze them from that burden because not everybody can do that. But CAN Care really emphasized self-directed care. And what you saw across the state when they rolled this out is that most agency-directed care agencies closed. There's about, that I'm familiar with, about three other agencies that take that administrative burden and supports clients. So oftentimes, there's no other option for them unless they want to do it themselves. So when you, to give you some context about how much CAN Care impacted, and there's lots of reasons it impacted, self-directed is one, and also the reduction of reimbursement for agency-directed care is so back in 2010, when CAN Care started, what we were looking at as an agency, Trinity was doing, employing about 400 employees a year. We were doing about 10,000 hours of support a month and we had about 800 clients a year. Today, we have about 120 to 150 employees. We do about 4,000 hours of care and we have about 300 clients. And that is because specifically the reimbursement structure has gotten so low that it's hard to provide adequate staffing or have, provide adequate staffing because we can't provide adequate wages. We pay Medicaid wages, which is equal to poverty wages. Which is, at their point, is that the cost of living has not kept up with Medicaid reimbursement. Cost of living has dramatically raised, especially in Lawrence. It's an attractive place to live. It's why I'm here. But it has not, Medicaid rates of reimbursement has not kept up with the cost of living, which makes it more and more challenging to find staff. Outcomes, I think it's always important to remember that we're here for specific things and that's what our clients expect. Our clients expect, our board expects, our staff expects quality support services. And that's measured in a variety of different ways. One is delay institutionalization as long as possible that people can stay at home. We're with different agencies like visiting nurses to make sure that they have a quality life at home as long as possible. Increased well-being, that can come from a variety of different things. Being with your spouse longer increases your well-being because you get to wake up to the person you love every day. To increasing well-being because we can take you to Burt Nash to get your mental health services that you need or take you to Heartland to make sure you're getting your checkup. So that kind of well-being. And then also understanding the decrease of costs, not only to our clients because we are affordable service, but also the decrease of costs to the state of Kansas and also to the county, understanding that we are also a more affordable option. Our goal is always to serve all people that come to our door. We're not able to do that. We would like to try to change that. We especially want to change that around Medicaid. Currently, we have a waitlist. But it is hard to serve people when you cannot find employees because of low wages or what I call Medicaid wages. And then we try to work towards with our resources, livable wages for our staff. So those are our outcomes. And the request that Stephanie's going to talk about is much more tied to those outcomes. And that's all tied around the access to service, livable wages, transportation reimbursement, so we can serve the county and rural county members and hopefully a collective space so that we can collaborate with our partners and delivering well-being to our clients. I believe the next slide is for Stephanie.
Oh, Scott?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? Hello, everybody. I'm Stephanie Wilson. I am the board president of Trinity. Thank you, Scott. That was, that was awesome. I wonder, Scott, if you can exit out of your screen share and I can start mine. Would that be okay?
Absolutely. There you go.
All right. Let me try this again. Sorry, I had to restart my computer while Cynthia was talking. I have an internet problems and now it's at the wrong place. Hang on just a second.
Scott.
Wonderful when it works. Yeah, I know, Scott. I tell you what, let's improvise here. Scott, would you do me a favor? And go back to sharing your screen and maybe I can talk to it through and you can just forward the screens. Would that be okay? Okay, so HCBS Medicaid services account for 85% of Trinity's revenue and that has been increasing over time. Medicaid doesn't pay as well as those clients who private pay. So we, our DSPs spend more time working. So 95% of our DSP's actual hours are spent working for, on Medicaid clients. So first of all, before I start in going into this, Scott did such a great job. He's stepped up to be our interim executive director and we really, I really appreciate that. And he's done a fabulous job. And I think he did a great job of telling you all of the great and wonderful things about Trinity and what a great organization it is and all the great things we do. And I kind of feel like I'm going to be coming in here and being kind of like bringing the hammer down. My day job as a lawyer and I'm going to come into this and kind of talk to you about how hard this is as well. It's getting harder and harder for us to provide the services. I think this slide is important because from our standpoint, those people who are on Medicaid are the ones that need our support the most. And part of the reason that I joined the board for Trinity is because they are so unique. You know, there actually are not very many agencies in the entire state of Kansas that attempt to do what we do because the rates are so bad. So we provide agency-directed Medicaid services under HCBS. And most places and most other communities, they don't have that. So for a lot of people throughout the rest of the state, getting Medicaid at home isn't even an option. So it's just one thing to keep in mind. Okay, if you would go forward to screen. See if I can switch your pictures. By providing HCBS Medicaid services to our local community, we help families of limited means with disabilities who are frail and elderly maintain their independence and some other things. And their dignity by providing needed services so that they can continue to live at home. And that very briefly restates what Scott has already stated very well. So next slide. And I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. I can't see the screen anymore.
Can other people see it?
Yeah, you know, I hit the, sorry, you guys, I hit the thumbnails on the right-hand side. And oh, there it went back. Okay, okay. So what are obstacles? I can see now. Obstacles to providing HCBS Medicaid. There's three big ones that we're dealing with right now. The first is, and Cynthia certainly hit on this, and Scott did too, is the low reimbursement rates for services per hour that Medicaid pays. The other thing is that a lot of people don't really think about, we're not, we're not able to dictate like minimum hours that we go and meet with a client. And we don't get paid for the travel time to and from appointments. So it's not just the low and reimbursement rate, it's the fact that we've got to send workers to and from appointments, and they don't get paid for that travel time. So, next slide. So breaking this down a little bit further, this is the actual reimbursement rates that Medicaid pays right now. And you'll see on here, there's lots of different acronyms. And I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this screen, but there are different rates that Medicaid pays based on the kind of services we're providing. For example, the FE is all the frail and elderly waivers. You'll see there's an overnight rate, and there's two different rates, and that, that really has to do with the level of care that's being provided. The, we do provide quite a bit of services under the IDD waiver, which has the lowest reimbursement rate of 1336 an hour, which is just really low. And then we also do the physical disability waiver, and that's for people who are under 65, but maybe, maybe they have early onset dementia or something like that. That is what that service is for. Next slide. And so if we looked at our receivables over the last eight months of this year, this breaks down just how much services we provide under these different waiver programs for Medicaid. And really, you know, we can, we can talk about the numbers if anybody has questions, but the bottom line is just printed down here on the bottom. You add all of this up, our average reimbursement rate that we get paid for Medicaid is 1377 an hour, which is pretty low. Next slide. So, and when you compare that to what the average private pay rate is in Douglas County, it's about $23 an hour. We're only getting paid 1377 per hour. Next slide. Another hurdle that we have is the no minimum hours for each appointment. For home healthcare agencies that are able to, most of them have switched to a model where there's a two to four minimum, two to four hour minimum. And the benefit of that minimum hour is that there's more time spent working and less time spent traveling for the worker. And with the way that the HCBS waiver contract works, we're just kind of stuck with, with what they tell us to do. So if they tell us like, yeah, you know, please, you know, serve somebody in Baldwin, have somebody go out there and spend 20 minutes with them and come back, that's really hard for us to find workers that are willing to go out and do that. Because we're not necessarily paying them to go out to do the work. So, so that makes it difficult. Next slide. So the other thing is Medicaid doesn't reimburse workers for travel time. So our DSPs spend a lot of time traveling to and from appointments, and we, and they are, and we aren't paid for it, so we can't pay them for it very easily. And this is especially true in situations like sending our workers to places out in the rural parts of the county, like Baldwin, for example, is one place historically that's been very difficult for us to get workers out there. Next slide. So how does Trinity supplement the Medicaid reimbursement rate and all of those other problems? We do have an annual fundraiser that we do every year. However, this year, we didn't do it because of COVID. So that did not take place this year, but we anticipate it will continue to take place in the future when this pandemic lets up. We also get private donations. And we currently have a committee that's working on sending out end-of-the-year requests for donors. So we are working on that. We do get some limited grants. I know, like in the last year, we received maybe a $10,000 grant for upgrading our computers and some things like that. But the problem that we've run into with, with the grants is that a lot of them have a lot of requirements that are difficult for us to comply with. Private pay has been something historically that has been very helpful to Trinity to help offset the cost of Medicaid. I was just looking at the numbers again before this program tonight, and this year, we are we are at 10% of what we expected our private pay revenue to be for the year, based on what our revenue was last year. And, you know, when the pandemic hit, it's just like all the people who could afford to private pay, it seemed like maybe they all had a choice versus all of our clients that are on Medicaid, they just kept on needing us. And we haven't seen any decrease in our requests for services from our Medicaid clients, but we've seen a huge decrease from the private pay clients. We also rely, I mean, the county, you guys have been so generous, and you, you provide, I would say it's 90% of all our grants and fundraising, all of that comes from you, and we're very appreciative of that. Next slide. So even with that, right now, we are operating at a loss. We operated at a slight loss last year, it's going to be a lot bigger this year. I will say we did get, you know, the paycheck protection program, we were able to take advantage of that, that has helped us out tremendously in the short term. But we are, we have a loss this year, and the loss is going to get bigger next year, and so we seem to be going in this downward spiral. Next slide. So how can we be sustainable long-term? I think the biggest key for us is we've got to figure out a way to increase the DSP wages to some kind of livable wage. Scott, Scott touched on it, but that, that it really is the biggest issue that we're struggling with right now. We have plenty of work to do, but we have a waiting list. We can't, we can't get enough people hired to go do the work. The other thing is if we can figure out a way to pay our employees somehow for their travel time, either reimbursing them for mileage or paying them, that would be tremendously helpful to them. And then also to us, because we can hire more people to do more work. The other thing is to increase the wages of administrative staff and the executive director. Next slide. So if we're going to break this down a little bit, right now, our starting wage is 850 an hour, which is so low. And Scott, and I know Scott has been working at recruiting people for that wage. I mean, it's tough, it's tough. So what we would like to do, and we spent a lot of time thinking about this, if, if we could increase our starting wage to what the livable wage was for our community, which we figured was 1146 an hour, that would be hugely helpful, but it's an increase of $3 an hour. And honestly, the DSPs, they're the, the biggest part of our expense. You know, our, our organization is really quite small, and we have the executive director, and we have three administrative staff that work, you know, that are in the office and doing work, and then every, all the other employees are all DSPs. So so that, that is a big increase in our budget to be able to do that. But if we were able to do that, we could hire so many more people. So that would be super helpful. The way our starting wages work is it starts at 850 and then increases to 950 after they complete a a four-week, like an interd- I'm not, I'm not going to say this right, an introduction program, but so we'd want to do something similar if we were starting them off at 1146 an hour. So, next page. The other thing we'd like to do, and in fact, we've already approved this for our budget next year, is that we are going to pay all DSP's minimum wage for any trips they take in between appointments during the day, because right now, we, we haven't been paying them anything. But we're going to start doing that. And then the other thing is, we were already paying people to try to encourage people to take clients that are out of town, but still in Douglas County, we were paying them mileage at 28 cents per mile, but we increased that to match what the IRS reimbursement rate is. Next slide. The other thing we'd like to do is increase the wages of our administrative staff and executive director by 15%. Right now, we've been looking for an executive director on and off, or gosh, I don't even know how long now, Scott, it's been a long time. Seems like forever.
Yeah. Since the pandemic started.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking for someone in the $69,000 range. If we could bump that up to $80,000, maybe we could find somebody. So that would be hugely helpful for us. The other thing is the three admin staff that we have working for us, they've been there for, they've all been there for five years or more. And, you know, we really haven't been giving raises for a long time, so we'd like to give them a raise as well. Next slide. The other thing is, one of the things that Tara Polanski approached us about at some point is renting space for our office in the Douglas County Human Services Building, and we're really interested in that. We, several board members went out and looked at the space, or admin staff went out and looked at the space. We like the building, it's a much better location for us. We love the fact, right now, we, we own our own little building, and it's all paid for, and quite frankly, it's cheaper. But but it's a great, it is a great space, and we're very interested in it. But in order to do the move, we'd have to sell our building, which will be some trouble, but the nice thing is it'd also give us some extra cash flow to live on and run the business longer. But then there'd also be some expenses associated with relocating. So we've figured out that moving would probably cost roughly 2,500, and then we probably have to do some build-outs as well. Next slide. So the county has been very helpful to us so far. They, you guys have been, I think, are, so far, we've received 60,000 this year, and I think you guys bumped us up to 60,000 last year, and we're very, very appreciative of that. But if we made all of the changes that I just talked about, we're still short $294,000 to get all of that done. But if we could do that over time, we could hire more DSPs, and that would we could provide more services to a lot more people. You know, historically, with the admin staff that we have, sort of our sweet spot, so that they're not overtaxed, and they're not overtaxed, but we're using them usefully and all of that. We'd like to be closer to 6,000 hours. Right now, we're at 41,000, 4,100 hours, and just, I ran some numbers to see, like, if you guys did start helping us with some of that, and we were able to do better, what would it look like? Even if we were providing 6,000 hours of service, our requests, we'd still be short by a whole lot, 287,000. And so, you know, in thinking about that, what other things can we do? We could increase our private pay clients more, and I think in the future, we will. We certainly have in the past, but we'd have to do it by a whole lot and become a very different organization than we are today. So yeah, and so I, you know, this, I know it's, it's a lot of money. But this is sort of where we're at. So next slide, I think that's my last slide. Yes. So with that, we open it up to questions.
And real quick, thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Scott. I did want to let the commissioners know, you know, we have carved, we identified some time to talk, to talk about this a bit more at next week's not next week's, yeah, a future commission meeting for, if, if the commission would like to make some decisions regarding this request for 2021, we've got some time carved out for that. But let's open it up for questions, and I'll leave it up to Commissioner Kelly in terms of timing as we get closest to, and what kind, what to 5:30, and I can take notes of follow-ups that you'd like me to put together for either VNA or Trinity.
Commissioners, any questions you have? We do have to keep this tight. We'd like to give us a little bit of a break before our regular business meeting in 22 minutes. So any questions, commissioners, or comments?
I, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Cynthia and Scott and Stephanie. Thanks for coming in this afternoon, evening, whatever it is, Scott. And it seems, it's getting dark. It seems like it's late. Yeah. And sharing, you know, your challenges with us and, and letting us know what's going on, and you know, it's, those are pretty frightening numbers to see, and I do appreciate everything that each of you and your organizations do in our community. And so I, you know, I think we've got some discussions to have on, on this, but, but thank you for giving us all that background, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Um, Jill, I just want to hear what you said again. The, I want to get clearer on what our capacity is to address this situation. It sounds like you're saying we would revisit the budget, or are you talking about one-time dollars, or?
I think that's the discussion, and Sarah, I'll let you weigh in too, but I think that's what we want to hear from you. It sounds like this is in a lot of ways, a situation that is very similar to the, the work that we did with the Lawrence Community Shelter a couple of years ago, and really trying to provide that sustainable fund, that the funding that they need to reboot in a lot of ways, but with some outcomes that are associated with that. And I think the things that you heard in the presentation are largely around how the, the wages are directly related to the services that they can provide in the community and the talent that they're able to attract. And in my mind, you know, and this is just my perspective, you know, the community health plan anti-poverty work group has been really looking closely at the, how many folks are in our service, our care worker industry that are are, are living in poverty, and what is our role as a community in supporting the agencies that support people that are living in poverty, but also are working in those industries as well. And there's a lot of challenges here, but we kind of just want to get some direction from the commission about how you'd like to proceed, and go ahead, Sarah.
And I guess I was going to ask a question, and maybe Jill knows this, or Scott or Stephanie. What was the amount you requested for the 21 budget that we placed in our sort of CARES Act, you know, Plan B amount? Do you all remember? Because that's, it's a different number than what Stephanie just showed.
I don't have that number. I don't, I don't have that number.
I think we requested additional 30.
Okay. So, you know, the, the impetus for this work session was to prepare for a reconsideration of that budget request, which was placed in sort of our, we'll see what happens after the CARES Act list. But that was a request for 30,000. I, before we have that, you know, our plan was to bring this back for consideration on the December 2nd agenda. The amount that Stephanie shows is a lot larger. And so, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, in our, what we set aside, you know, we didn't have that kind of money set aside. So I, that's the part where I think there's a little bit of a, you know, we need to take some of this offline and talk about that in terms of, you know, what's the best approach? Because I, you know, I guess part of my concern here is that, you know, if we gave- Because I, you know, I guess part of my concern here is that, you know, if, if we gave, thirty thousand was part of what we had thought you might need. If that's not enough to really even keep Trinity functional into twenty-twenty-one, you know, then that sort of, then that's a conversation that I don't know that can be solved necessarily in two weeks or probably this year. So that, but that, that's sort of where I'm at right now. Does that make sense?
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering in terms of, this is a, a massive request, a massive need and certainly needs attention now. We have, we're a commission with just a few more meetings before it's a new commission. So I guess that's what I would like for us to think through, what can we actually do that's meaningful? And so we're not sending any false hopes or wrong messages, or maybe we can do something substantial, but it's, we don't have much time.
Yeah, and that was really my thought of today was, was to wrap up the budget process request of thirty thousand. You know, and, you know, and I think we could, so I, you know, let, I think Jill and, and Scott and Stephanie and I can talk offline a little bit. I mean, depending on the questions commissioners have about what we bring back on, on the second, and maybe we just even just have more of a conversation on the second. I would say, you know, if it's, if, the, the amount here is staggering in terms of where the organization is. And, and one of the things that Jill and I have talked about is, you know, I'm really curious as to what, if, if Trinity wasn't here, you know, what would, what would happen? And what would the impact be on our other community service providers? You know, I mean, what would?
I have that concern as well, Sarah.
Yeah, I bet you do.
And, and. About it all the time.
So, you know, I think it's one of those things like, you know, where if other, if, 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 if everyone was like Cottonwood and Burt Nash and other folks were on this call similar to as Cynthia is, you know, would this be a bigger issue that we could discuss with all of our community partners? I'm not saying they have money necessarily to help fund it, but, but I think trying to sort of raise awareness as to the situation here and, and how valuable that service is. I think our community service partners are in a much better position to tell us that than necessarily, you know, they're in a really good position to tell us that, I think. Is that helpful?
Helpful to me, Sarah, just a couple of questions. I, I don't know who, who's the right person to ask this, but I, did we get CARES Act's requests from Trinity and from VNA?
We did not.
Okay.
And, and, and if you remember correctly, like it, towards the end of the budget there, we weren't really sure. And so I think there was a thought that we would maybe have some ability to use CARES Act for other stuff. And, and so we, we did set some money aside and I can get that for us for next week. But I, I'm not sure if that was even associated with ongoing funding. So that would have to be a conversation we need to have with, with, I need to check with Kami on.
Yeah, I just, as we think about this and knowing our short timeline, I'd sort of want sort of that history of all those. Because this Trinity wasn't the only one that we considered with some money held over for CARES Act. You, you know, that we were going to sort of see about that. The other thing is when we, when we did, when we made some emergency funding requests for the shelter, we really put some, some performance expectations, some things into it. So I think, I think we need to think about just not only the short term of keeping Trinity afloat, but what is the long-term prognosis for this? Because, you know, nothing that I've seen today says, oh, well, if we get this one burst of four hundred thousand or whatever it is, we're going to be able to make it over the, I mean, this sounds like ongoing support. And so we need to think sort of long-term about that. The, the last thing, just, just because it is such a big request that jumped out to me, just so that you all know, and I don't, we did not provide raises for our Douglas County staff this year as part of our budget process. So that fifteen percent jumps out at me as a, it is a large amount and I'm sure it's warranted, but I think we just have to be thoughtful about that in a time when lots of organizations are not looking at large raises. And so maybe thinking about when we come back, like a scaled version of that, you know, what might be something we might do in one year and two years and three years? Because the, that's a big jump and I didn't, I wasn't fast enough with my calculator to get the jump in wages. You know, certainly we want to get people to a living wage. That is the goal. But, but I didn't figure out what the percentage, what a jump that would be. Those are, that would be a big jump. So just something to keep in mind as we, and those would be some of the things I'd like to think about when it comes back.
Um, I might offer that we also sent over to the, the county, the budget we've actually passed for next year. And that's assuming that you guys help us as much as you've helped us this year, but we are eighty-two thousand short. So the raises that are involved in that are, are much smaller. I don't know, it may help you all just to take a look at that in terms of figuring out what something is that's more reasonable. My, my understanding, and I apologize, first time I've appeared before in one of these meetings, I don't really know what the process is exactly, but my understanding was, you know, what, we were supposed to come to you with what would make us, you know, sustainable over the long term. And we tried to do it just directly and honestly. And I wish I could say you, say it's just, you know, an infuse of money one time and then we're good. But, you know, we're in a tough spot. It was really interesting to me to listen to Cynthia talk about how their services have declined just in the last few years at well, as well. I mean, I, I think it's a variety of a lot of things that are going on to cause that. For us, I think the big, big thing is just the Medicaid reimbursement rates are just so darn low. It's just really hard to figure out a way to overcome that. It would be really sad if, if we're not here anymore. So, yeah.
So Stephanie, I, I think you know this, I'm a huge fan of what you do for Trinity and your mission. I think we all are. I think I speak for all commissioners, the value that you do. And if you don't come before us and tell us what you need to be whole, you wouldn't be doing your job as president of the organization. And we understand that and, and we would expect that. So we appreciate that. We've just got to figure out how, how to, how to help it in a way that we have the resources to do that. And I'm, I don't think I'm speaking outside of what we do in our work sessions. It's just, I think Sarah asked a little bit for sort of what we're thinking about and what you all can work on before you come back to our next meeting. And, and so those are just some things that are in my head as you think about it. The reimbursement rates are unexcusable. I mean, in my opinion, it's, it's, we have totally at, at a state and a federal level abandoned our responsibility to this population. And it's disappointing to me that we at a county level have to do that work, but we're going to do what we can to serve the, the people who are most vulnerable in our community. So.
I do have those, I do have those budgets that I can provide as a follow-up to this and, yeah.
And my purpose in being here today really was to educate you about the services that VNA provides and, you know, where your dollars are going to what programs. But if you have any follow-up questions, don't hesitate to get them to Jill and I'll get answers to you as soon as I can.
Cynthia, I, sorry, so I, I can't, what you explained to us today was so helpful. And I think it talks to the whole systems problem that we're having right now. And when we think about a long-term approach to this, that, that's what we really got to engage is, you know, Sarah talks about the other human service providers. If Trinity wasn't here, what would that happen? So how do we all work together? We've really seen that on a housing front in my mind during the CARES response. You know, how can we work together to address the housing crisis? How can we work together to address what has really been, you know, just with the change in reimbursements rates has really sent a shiver through the supports that we, that are being provided by you and so many others in the community and the long-term impacts that's going to have on the health of our community if we don't address it as a community.
Yeah, I, I thank you for that. I think that's a really good wrap-up and Commissioner Kelly into what we were trying to tell the story of here in terms of this, you know, if the county has areas in which its human surface focus is, which would be, you know, behavioral health and at-risk services, you know, for at-risk populations. And our conversations about just vital safety net. This, this kind of reaches both at-risk populations and that sort of vital safety net. These services, there is nowhere else to get this worked. You're in line for a nursing home if, if, if you are not able to have these, this kind of help. And so I, I think that is really the heart of our mission to at least try to help elevate those conversations and to talk more about how that system is working. So.
Well, I hate to cut the conversation short, but we have just enough time to breathe and come back at five-thirty for our business meeting. Thanks so much for coming. It sounds like we'll see you again soon and we appreciate all your work.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.